It's like a.
Okay, now we're opening the, the work session for March fourteenth, City Council. Julie, could you call it all, please?
Council Thompson Reiter.
Present.
Council Hill. Non-present, Council Erickson.
Here.
Council Brenna.
Here.
Council Skipper.
Here.
Council Lord Mullen. Mayor Watkins.
Here. Alrighty, first item on the agenda is the vacation rental dwelling discussion. Turn that over to you and Tyler.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the council's goals is to develop vacation rental policy that are conducive to maintaining community livability. The city attorney has developed a memorandum that about various aspects of vacation rental regulation, just as a starting point. And Amy Emerson is here to talk about the day-to-day impacts to the staff and how, answer any questions you may have about our licensing rules.
So. Shall we start with Tyler?
There's lots of options with various pros and cons. And to sort of bandwagon on what Shannon was saying, some of what is mentioned in the memo is really Amy's side of things, not so much impacts on the neighborhood, but what can city staff realistically handle in terms of licensing or additional regulations? Which I is the, I think, less looked back piece of all of this. But it's not as exciting as complaining about all the vacation rentals in your neighborhood. There is no magic bullet answer without making everybody happy. I think it's probably all like coolness in that way, that there's pros and cons. Each city's gonna be different. I wrote a lot in here, I don't really just want to read this.
Well, I don't know. Thank you, I appreciate that.
But there, there's a lot that goes into it, and I tried to reasonably touch on some of it.
And Tyler's memorandum also comes from Amy and I sitting down, myself coming from a background from a city that had a very high vacation rental dream of people coming in. And Amy's perspective coming from the city of Carlton, in which she does a wonderful job of making sure that staff reports are done timely and going through the licensing process and making sure people are aware of any challenges and working with them. So, like you said, a lot, these are issues that have stemmed from our joint experience such as applications and licensing, fees that are required, transferability of licenses. And so, a lot of times you'll hear things of how do you handle noise? How do you handle garbage? Those all go to community livability as well. And so, that's a lot where this came from, that background. I don't know where council wants to start the discussion.
One question, Yaha's, I mean, it's like a real destination, vacation destination place, so no surprise, there are a lot of vacation rentals there. In that community, what were, what was the, you know, sort of the top issue of having so many vacation rentals there?
Um, the initial issue, and this was handled in part prior to my arrival there, was the number of vacation rentals and the number of secondary homes. And so, the city was seeing a lot of empty homes during the week because a lot of the vacationers tended to come on weekends. So it meant a lot of the time, you had emptier homes during the week. And so, and then it was concern about where are other people going to find housing? If people are buying them for second home and retirement homes, but using them as vacation rentals now, what does that do with our housing supply? So, that initial issue was addressed prior to my arrival. And then, some of the second, what I would call secondary or unintended consequences from that started arising of, how do you determine somebody's following the vacation rental licensure policy? Uh, because we had a cap in place. So, how are they following the process? Are they being good neighbors? Is the local contact actually doing what we want them to do? Are they actually getting garbage service correctly? Because we required them to have what was called a concierge garbage service. So their garbage cans, let's just say you left on a Sunday, they were behind an enclosure, so the community didn't see them. That has a gate on it, so they didn't blow around in the community. And, but they had to be covered, and that required the garbage agency to go in under the driveway, under the property, take the garbage out. And so there was an extra payment for that, but they dealt with that also regarding vermin, uh, to deal with bears, gunks, raccoons, rats. Well, that, the, the garbage was sitting outside, so how did we address that? So, um, we also had a lot of dog issues. We would have people come on vacation and some areas of town did not have a lot of fencing, including the vacation rental properties. And so, somebody's dog would bleed into somebody else's yard and leave deposits. So, that's a very long-winded answer of it started with, what are we going to do just about empty homes? And making sure we stay a community, not just a resort. And then it led into some other issues.
Did you, have Ms. Yaha's been able to reconcile any of those?
I think like any community, it struggles, um, but it has reconciled a number of them. It's not perfect, no sense in this. But it has, over the years, dealt with some of them. Uh, one of the largest issues that came up while I was there was transferability. And, uh, we had a lot of larger homes that were either specifically purchased or built as vacation homes. And the families wanted to leave those homes to their children as far as inheritance. But in order to maintain the cap and to encourage turn, turnover, it was not allowed, the vacation rental license was not allowed to be inherited or run with the property. And so, the vacation rental license left. And so, the children would, if it was inherited to whomever, they would either have to apply for a new license, or they would have to maintain the home on their own.
Did they do a, a cap on the absolute number of vacation rentals that were allowed?
They did. Due to Yaha's size and geography, they decided just to do a cap on the total number of houses that could be vacation rentals. I will tell you, they put a cap in place that was under the number of licenses that were currently issued at the time. So they, at the time they put the cap in, there was approximately a hundred and fifty or so licenses out there, and they put a cap in at a hundred and twenty-five.
How does that hundred and twenty-five relate to the number of, you know, dwellings in Yaha's? What's the percentage?
So, based upon today's population estimate from Portland State, it's approximately twelve. Total number of dwellings.
You have any idea where we are? We're at five percent?
We are at five percent right now, and it's actually because of the growth that we've had in Carlton, we've actually been able to maintain that. Yes, we're getting a rapid number of vacation rental applications. But at the same time, we're increasing our housing, that it's kind of offsetting, and we're seeing, staying pretty steady at that five. We're just a little, maybe five point two percent.
So with this paper, this page, chapter seventeen, one twenty-five, what Carlton is?
Chapter seventy, yes, but in their process.
So on, we come down here to I. How, how is the city enforcing that?
The local property representative?
Yeah.
So when they fill out their application, um, the application is the sec, the next part. They, number nine is please provide the name, address, and phone number of the local representative. So that means the property owner has to designate somebody that lives within city of Carlton as a local representative, or they need to hire a licensed property management company, which has to be in ten miles of the property. So, if they put a local rep in, I will actually have the sack, I will call them and be like, hey, just want to make sure that you know, so-and-so put you down. I've never had anybody go, what? So everybody's always been very truthful about that. Um, and the licensed property management companies, um, they always, they're actually then confirmed. So, they, there's some confusion about that with most applicants, they usually just want to use somebody they're comfortable with, but if they don't live within the city limits, not like even outside them, they have to, their house has to reside here in town or a property management company that has license.
So, city limit or urban growth boundary?
Which is the same for us.
Which is the same?
Yes.
Same, oh, okay.
So Amy, I don't quite, I mean, I, I don't quite get the rationale for that. If there is someone who is a owner of a vacation rental that lives in the greater Carlton area, that's literally five minute drive from town. I, I don't get why we're putting that restriction on it.
That's just how our code is written.
But I mean, that, that's, but, okay, so that's a bit of an issue, I think.
It is, it, it can be an issue, um, but ultimately, it's for the safety and the protection of both property owner and the renter, so that if there is an emergency, that local representative or property management company can get there in a timely fashion. Not that a, a property owner that lives nearby wouldn't be able to, but it's a second person. And additionally to the property owner.
Also you want somebody else in addition to.
You, these, this person is the number one call, and then you'd have a number two call, which could be the property owner. But in this case, if you use the property owners, then they're the one, you don't have.
You kind of want to.
You basically, ideally, you'd like to have it.
All right.
And a lot of times when you're looking at local representatives, it is within the city limits, um, although in Carlton, I can see your point. But say you have to be within a ten-minute response time or whatever it is, because you're looking for that quick response time in case there's a problem. It puts an extra burden on staff of evaluating how far out is the property owner? Is it ten minutes? Is it twenty? Is it thirty? And then it becomes, it can become a judgment call at that time.
With that being in that I, is that something that they need to uh, update to you every year, or do we, the city, reach out of how, I don't know how many we have, you know, we, so say we have twenty-five properties, but I'm sure it's more than that. Do we reach out to those twenty-five every year to make sure that this is updated?
I don't. I make them, and I tell them, once they approve their permit, that any changes that they have to the notice of decision, which includes number I, the local representative, they have to tell me in writing. And so, when they do that, they just send me an email, I put it into their electronic file, and so I have enough spreadsheet, so I can pull up that spreadsheet and update that and change that. So, I do ask them time of permitting, that they, they, they keep it open and honest. I don't want them to have to do another application, it's more work on me and them, and simple email works great, um, so we can keep everything.
Keep it on the honor, excuse me, on the honor system unless there's a issue, then, yeah.
So, we've had some instances where the homeowner just thought they could go ahead and rent it out, and they didn't really run through the city on it. How do we find out that that is even happening?
I check weekly. I check Airbnb, VRBO, Craigslist, you name it, I have four or five sites that I go through. And I know just from doing it weekly, what addresses they are on there. And even on VRBO, they don't list the address, but I can look at the house and the view from the outside, know exactly what neighborhood, know exactly the house. Half the time I know the owner and I just call him, you're out of compliance, you need to do this. So it's a little bit more work for me, but at this point, I know Carlton so well and the people here, that it's, it's pretty quick and I can do it.
I'm a little confused on this. The issuing of these licenses, if you sell the property, it looks like up in this first paragraph, it said that once it's issued, it goes with the property forever. And then back here on seventeen point one two five point zero three oh, says that it is. It, it's, it's not transferable, but if you sell it, it's not.
Currently, our code is, it is not transferable, so if it's a vacation rental right now, and they sell it, the new owner has to go through that process again.
Okay. I was a little confused by that too, Harold, because it seemed, Tyler, maybe you couldn't explain, it looked a little inconsistent. I'm probably not reading it though.
I didn't, I saw it as the same.
The second paragraph, the, the start of the memo says.
So it does not presently allow the transfer. The city does not presently allow the transfer. That's what I, I thought, I read it the same in both things.
But you were, but, but Tyler, you were, there was something else in there about inherent rights? You know? But that's, is that considered part of that?
Uh, okay, yes, I am on board with you two now. So because the city's process is, these permits are not transferable, there isn't a permanent right to keep your vacation rental permit. So there's no issue with that limitation, because that is the status quo when that additional property right was approved. If we had permits that ran with the land, and then we switched to, let's say, how we do it now, where they're not transferable, then we would have issues for any of those sort of permanent permits that we would have granted. So that's what that second pair is. Once we've granted a right, if that right is not limited, we can't then take it back later on.
And that, if we would have done it to the land, and it grandfathered in that that land is vacation rental property as long as they want to use, as long as whoever owns it.
So that's if we had it now, and we wanted to change it to the way it's currently run, or if through this discussion, you decide there are circumstances in which you want it to transfer due to sale. So, that, he's making you aware that there, that is something to consider when you're having this discussion.
What a point in time, if we put a cap, and if we keep that with the owner, then they'd sell it, then it's, that it no longer can be, correct?
That is how we could pare down.
That's how we could keep, to reduce numbers, or keep them to that number that we decide upon.
And I will tell you, Yaha's got to the point that they had to be pretty strict about it. When you applied for a vacation rental, if it was in the husband's name and the husband passed, then it was not transferable to the wife who was still owning the house. They could not put it into a trust, because people tried to put the house into a trust. Uh, and the vacation rental license was not able to go into a trust, it had to be in a person's name.
That could be awkward.
Yeah, that's really.
So Amy, right now in Carlton, kind of the same question to you that I'd asked of Shannon, what are, what do you see as the top issues, negative issues that occur due to vacation rentals?
Um, I call it, it's not glamorous, but I call it clumping. I'm seeing a lot of clumping, meaning there is multiple houses, either one next to another, and right next to each other, or within a few houses in specific areas in town, and it's mostly grouped around both east and west Main Streets and a few blocks off. But it's definitely, um, for example, Coot Street, when you turn down Coot Street from Main Street, the first five blocks of Coot Street, once you pass Monroe, it's like ten or twelve houses, every single one of those houses is a vacation rental, has a permit.
They look so tidy. I know people don't live there.
But now on the other side of the street, there's none. So, but that's what I mean by clumping, we've got areas within certain neighborhoods where.
Clumping in my neighborhood.
There, there's a tad, and, and, and down here on West Main, there's.
Three in a row.
Three in a row, yeah.
Well, three in a row, and then there's four, one half a block up.
Yeah, so, that's my, that's my biggest view from it. Um, another area is East Monroe, over there behind our City Hall building, is becoming a hotspot as well. It's, it's all within walkability of downtown, which is what people, it's very attractive to those wanting to come stay here. Um, they can park their car and walk around Carlton and enjoy what we have to offer. But at the same time, some of those that live in that neighborhood year-round are feeling a little alienated, a little alone.
Yeah, because I, I was seeing, you know, on, on, you know, that aspect, I was thinking, when I was reviewing this, that I don't know how difficult it would be for you to do it, it'd be more work for you, but if we had some kind of like a map, I don't know if we have a residence map of Carlton that, that we could just do X's in these neighborhoods, so we could visually see where all of these.
Well, you can kind of get that off of the, the, the RBO.
Yeah.
Map.
Oh, that, that's not all the places that get rented, right?
But it, it looks pretty dense right away.
That is a good, and it's one visual, I've got one that I've made, it's, it's a, I need to update it. Um, I think twenty twenty-two was our biggest year of vacation rentals, and I think I did eighteen permits last year, which on normal years, six to eight.
So what's the total number right now in town?
So, thank you, I did that math, so we actually right now have fifty properties that are approved, that have an approved permit.
Fifty.
Fifty. There is eight of those that are not active, and by not active, means they are not currently renting on the vacation rental market. They're not going through VRBO, they have a long-term renter in there, or the owner is living there. When that happens, I just ask for an email, so that I know that we will not be anticipating transient tax from those properties. Uh, but the other forty-two are active. Some of them rent quite frequently, and some of them are more spontaneous in their rental history, but, um, there is, there is forty-two active right now, and I have two pending.
And do you know, you know, of the owners of these properties, are most of them, you know, individual, of, you know, husband, wife, family, you know, individuals as opposed to, are there any corporations that own some of these homes?
It is, is, most of them, all of them right now are registered to a person, like Shannon was saying, they are all in somebody's name. Once they become a rental, they have, a lot of times, you've seen on VRBO, they change it to like, Q Carlton Cottage, they change the name of the, the property, but it's still an owner person.
But I mean, it's not like some investment company that's doing it, okay?
Now, whether some of the people that own them have them as investment properties, a hundred percent, there's, there's definitely those people from out of town, purchasing homes in Carlton and strictly not have any intent of moving here, or use it as a vacation rental. We do have those, but it is in a person's name, it's not in a corporation.
Yeah, because I see some of these older houses that have been so run down, and then they're purchased and starting to be worked on, and I'm just wondering, is that gonna, you know, because again, they're within walking distance, and you're so happy to see them getting fixed, and then, uh, I know what's gonna happen next.
Yeah, I think most of the, my estimate is that most of the vacation rentals are in the older section of town. Is that accurate?
Primarily in the west, in, in the east and west offshoots of Main Street and a few side streets.
But I've heard of some over there in the JR one.
Yes, we're actually getting quite a few new ones.
Yeah, because people have this model in their brain, that they can rent this property, yeah.
Those townhomes behind uh, City Hall.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Four sold and two of them are vacation.
Vacation rentals, I'm, yeah, that makes sense.
So with that being said, when somebody applies for that, say like in JR Meadows, somebody applies, city sends out a letter, a hundred feet, so within the nick, one or two houses around them.
Yeah, it's not very far.
Not far. And if those neighbors then complain to the city via email, written, pound on the door.
Oh, be that.
Yeah. What then makes it to where the city can still approve for that liking?
So if we receive comments on any application received for vacation rentals, um, I notify the applicant, and they have to do what's called a conditional use permit. So it actually turns it into a type-two quasi-judicial planning commission review prop, uh, issue. So they, there's an additional fee, I believe it's a thousand dollars currently, they have to pay that. And they have to come back to the city with a plan of how they're going to rectify and meet these comments and concerns that we received. So, that's when, that's when I hand it to the city planner and go, here you go, this is my, and they, and then they take that to the planning commission, and we all kind of work out. So what the conditional use permit does, though, is it adds conditions in addition to what they already currently have to meet, the vacation rental application, they add additional con, conditions to the property that the applicant and the property owner have to meet in order to satisfy the needs of the neighborhood and the neighbors. Now, we still have to approve it, essentially, because it's permitted in that zone. So we can't, the commission can't deny it, because it's approved in that zone, but the conditional permit, permit application allows them to add additional criteria. So we've had some in the past where the neighbors complained that the fences didn't seem high enough for privacy. So they added a condition that they had to plant some type of tree or bush, shrubbery to add additional privacy. Or curtains on windows in between houses to, for increased privacy. It's mainly privacy and lighting issues. Um, there is some sound and parking issues depending on the neighborhood that the, the house has been, uh, in, but primarily it's privacy and for the surrounding neighbors.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting, I mean, we've got, you know, obviously, we've got three right behind us on Main Street, and it's been an interesting to watch the way each one of the owners, because they're three different owners, so they're each take care of the places a little bit differently, or address stuff a little bit differently, and the different kinds of people that come into them. Um, they each seem to have a little different type of renter, which I thought was interesting. So. But.
Do we feel like, um, what if, that, I mean, a hundred feet, I don't know, is that pretty typical, like with the city of McManville, or it seems like I see these permits come through, and there's a lot more neighbors that are involved in the comment portion of it? Like, a hundred feet seems pretty, that seems like one lot almost, like a couple lots, like your next-door neighbor.
Minimum lot for it.
So like, I didn't know, like, is it, would it be helpful, like, to have more of a neighborhood notification if that's five hundred feet or something like that? Because it doesn't just affect the person next door at first.
No, no, and we do, it, it's a hundred feet from all, it's like a circle, so like the houses, so encompasses sides back, you know, that encompasses.
Quarter of a block, you've got two houses possibly.
Yeah, but what I always do is I also post it at the post office, it's posted here at City Hall, it's also posted on our website. So yes, we do, the minimum where it's required by the state is a hundred feet. But we also make it more public by putting it on those platforms as well.
So can you not then legally post it three houses away? Even though it just says a hundred feet, is that a hundred feet minimum or a hundred feet maximum?
That's minimum, that's minimum. So for me, when they're required to submit that information, those property people and mailing address, it's part of the application. So I will see that list, and then I take my, open my map up, and I make sure A, that they got everybody, and B, if there's a property that's just a smidge, I will add it to it. So, I, I always over notify, because I feel like that's not gonna hurt anything, but at the same time, they're required to do, that's what they're required to do, is that hundred-foot minimum, when they supply with their application, because that is required.
They're, they're required to send out a notice?
That, we send out the notice, but they're required to submit that information with the application. So that way, I'm not going and finding that information, they can pay for it to get done at the county or a title company. And then, I write up the notice, send it out, but I also verify. And then I write up the notice, send it out, but I also verify to make sure that that is inaccurate representation of a hundred.
So they provide you with the names and the addresses basically of the people of the. Properties within the hundred feet.
So do we, we collectively feel right that there's an issue, a problem now that. Needs to be addressed and fixed, or I mean, in terms of caps, whether it's a general cap or a neighborhood cap. Or perhaps thinking about that, Kevin, what you just said of expanding. The area of approval that more people within that community can weigh in. On another, you know, and and that perhaps there'll be, uh, even if it has to go to the planning commission, more conditional uses for it. Are conditions put on the summit, I'm sorry?
And with that, can we put a. Like Coot Street is pretty full. Is it to where you could put a percentage? If you got a street with twenty houses on it, only a certain percentage of that street can be. Uh, rentals. Vacation rentals.
That's one option.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's.
Long term, we're not really talking about long term rentals, in fact, I mean, just. One or two nights type of thing, yeah. So is it that we can do that, put a percentage per street?
Yeah, or it could be a minimum buffer. I think they've been, they'll have five hundred feet.
So like every other house?
Yeah, I think. A little bit further than just every other house. Going back to what you said, Shannon, how did that, so the city Yaha's limited to less than what was actually approved for. How did they try, what happened with the other twenty five?
It took about five years uh, to see actual turnover. To the point where we dropped below a hundred and twenty five, and then we had to come up with a process of how we were going to. Issue vacation rental licenses. Um, and at that point, we did a lottery, but it took five years to figure out. Um, or for people to turn over homes. And we're just got vacation rental license.
That's where my mind was going is like, if you, if you set something like that up, like what are the consequences for, just because we've been talking about a Coot Street? You know what I mean? Like, obviously, I don't feel comfortable saying. You're out, you're out, you know what I mean? Um, I don't think that's fair. So it's just like. When, if we create some sort of policy, like also looking at the effect of it and what. How long that takes, like, obviously, like you said, you're just waiting for that turnover, it sells or. Um, somebody passes away or what, you know, ownership change. So they would all essentially be still licensed and then the new rules take effect on termination of the. Property or whatever the, where it was.
If you set a cap lower than your current licenses, yes, that's what would happen.
Or like a buffer zone or or something like, looking at restrictions.
Now, if you set a cap. Let's say we have fifty now and you set a cap of one twenty five. Um, you've now created a market. And there will be people who will purchase uh, licenses and on the off chance that they might use it as a vacation rental. There are people who don't believe in vacation rental. This happened in Yaha's, this is a true story. People who will purchase vacation rental licenses and hold them just to avoid other people from being able to have the license. So that was something the council did have to consider as an unintended consequence of. The cost of, cause we had an annual license fee. So if you wanted to maintain a, a vacation rental license, you had to pay a fee. We had to make the fee reasonable, but at a point that it did not become advantageous or easy. To just maintain the license, just to hold on to it so somebody else couldn't have it.
So can it be put in there that? Say in that case, somebody buys a license, the house is just, or they just holding on to that, but that license has to be tied to a house, correct? Okay, so they're gonna have a house that's sitting empty. Do they, the city? Um, and these people just pay it, pay it one year, two year, three years down, you know? But if they don't actually rent the property X number of days throughout the year, that then could be removed.
So that was something that the council considered. Uh, they ultimately decided that we did not have the staff at that time, and by we, I'm saying Yaha's at that time. Did not have the staff to monitor how many nights it was rented accurately. So a lot, as Amy was saying initially, a lot of it's on the honor system. And so we did not have the staff capacity to be checking every vacation rental every single night.
So with that being said, right now, let's, I'm assuming, you know, staff is short. Um, that if these. Codes or rules, or whatever you want to call them, are put into place. Now that they're there, regardless, I mean, if the city doesn't check, but we still have. The code there, and we have a lot of codes in town that are there that aren't enforced.
I'm sorry.
Is that?
Was there a question?
Is that? I guess you're the attorney, you can tell them.
I think it's important for the council to understand what city staff can and can't handle. And um, to kind of go back, I'm clear, since what you were. Asking about men, you know, minimum number of days per year to get out. In Yaha's, they. Had a particular have, not past tense, a particular definition for what qualifies as a vacation rental, which does not require. Payment of money. And so. Just having your very large family sort of cycle through. Could fit you into that definition. That makes it really hard to track because it's not just keeping track of VRBO, Airbnb, do you say it was five? Five websites that you check?
And the Craigslist isn't gonna show me that information. There is software called Host Compliance that does monitor, that can keep track of that information. It is a fee, I think, the last time we looked into it, it's like twelve grand a year or something. Um. And we actually used it for a while when our city manager Dennis Durham was here, he wanted to use that, cause he felt that I'd. It would be better use of my time to have Host Compliance run it. But it got to the point that Host Compliance was not catching, I was catching non compliant beer vacation rentals before Host Compliance. And getting them rectified before they even realized. So it really wasn't saving a whole lot, so we don't use it. Now, there are other software companies, the cost is gonna be pretty similar. Um, they do have multiple platforms, so I think that last count, the last. Presentation I saw, there's over ninety platforms that they monitor for vacation rentals. Um, so hopefully they have improved over time, cause obviously people are sticking with them and developing additional softwares for that. Um, Tyler's correct. We had a, because there was a cap and now there was a market. For the inability to get a license, there was a lot of. Quote unquote, black market license, uh, rentals. And the particular property that was a cause. That often came to my attention under that particular code. Was a property owned by a religious organization and they offered it to their members as a res. Uh, a retreat for respite, people who were healing, whatever the case was. But it did, it often met that requirement of if there was more than four or five cars per week, that it was being used as a vacation rental.
How much? Um, so vacation rental, we, how does that pay, the payment payout work on that? Because the money goes to the state?
So they, they pay their transient tax fees.
Right.
To the state.
Right.
And the state collects all of it, cause we recently changed that, I think twenty twenty one, um, up until then, I was taking care of it, but. Uh, with fifty rentals especially now, it's, it's just, it's too much. So the people pay their, there's seven percent city tax to the state. And the state remits, they take a not, a pretty minimal fee. Um, and then we, we get the rest in a check uh, quarterly. And it just depends on, we have higher seasons and lower seasons depending on rental, you know, same as the coast, there's probably higher season. Receipts in the summertime. So we also sees, you know, second quarter, third quarter is our high times. Um, especially with summer and then harvest. Is our higher quarters of res- of receipts, but then the COVID hit and it was.
Yeah, yeah. Has it bounced back from COVID?
It has. I don't think it's near what it was before COVID, but we are coming back. Um, and then the, the other thing that, it's also happened is we've had more rentals, so instead of having. Certain rental properties generating larger sums of tax, it's being more spread out between properties. Which it ultimately is the same amount of money, but you don't have certain properties that are just moneymakers like they have been. It's kind of spread out as more people have.
I'm kind of inclined to have the view that instead of having a general cap. Of the number of rentals within the city, to do it by location to avoid this clumping issue. And, you know, setting uh, space parameters between, you know, properties. Um. And I'm in, you know, and I don't know what's gonna be, I just happened to quickly look at the um, applications coming before the planning commission for the new. Proposed subdivision, and it looks from looking at one of the diagrams that there's proposed to have several of those. Sort of narrower homes that like the ones over on.
Yes.
Monroe. Um, and I can just see.
Yeah.
People buying some of those up, oh, we're gonna rent those out, you know, because they view Carlton as a great investment. From the real estate perspective. And it's just, I just see that happening.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Potentially, and there was the one situation that they had over on JR one where the guy wanted to do a vacation rental and. Basically, I think it, it did not end well for him. The neighbors were not pleased with that situation at all.
With the signs that were.
Yeah.
So if you had a space, you know, you know, so you've got all those, am I, am I, am I going down of?
No, I just thought the signs thing. I don't know anything about what happened, but it sounds like I'm.
It was. It was unfortunate. It was a very unfortunate situation and the neighbors were not pleased at the idea of having a vacation rental there. And they made their displeasure well known. And it's no longer a vacation rental. So.
So I'm a little bit, so like, I guess I'm just gonna ask, do we have a problem right now?
You know, it, it's in the eye of the beholder. We are getting more applications at a faster rate than, I mean, I've, so I've been here almost eight years processing these. Um, in the last two and a half years, it is, it is definitely exponentially growing. So right now, we might be safe, we're, we're still in that buffer zone, but um. For example, with the new subdivisions coming in, we're getting more higher density subdivisions, so more R two and R three zones. Which is going to lead to park, parking issues, it's gonna lead to issues with privacy because everybody's closer together. So, um, there could be more issues. Uh, right now, our code says that you need one parking spot on the property, not on the street, per bedroom in the house. But you need a minimum of two. So my issue is when I'm reviewing properties. It's a three bedroom house in an R two zone, they have one car parked in the garage, one in the driveway, but there's three bedrooms. So they should probably have another parking spot, but they have a minimum of two. And so. More, having more clarity or more very structured rules. In our, in our vacation rental, if you want a minimum of three or you want a minimum per bedroom, then you don't have the option of, oh, but you have two.
So how it says right now, it contradicts itself.
It does.
So that can be alleviated by just saying one per bedroom.
Right. So it, it needs to be either and or, or, but then if you say. Or, you know, then you gotta remember to just consider the higher density zones. So they, they need to be able to be encompassing, so we're, if we do wanna spread it out throughout the town, that people can still meet. The requirements of the application, if we wanna spread it out.
And that's why I'm, you know, supposed to just a general cap, you know, think it might be wiser to um, have. You know, size limitation, you know, so you've got all these row houses, but you have to say so many fees, so that avoids. You know, three in a row being rentals.
Yeah, or the parking does it too, or I mean, if you have three, four bedroom, what's that?
Or you can allow on-street parking. Right now, it's not permitted in the application process.
Yeah, so if these row houses, like on Monroe, those are three or four bedroom. If they're three bedroom. Right now, all we're requiring is two on-property parking spaces. So that can be changed to.
Do they even have parking on the property there?
There's one stall in the driveway, but they require the garage. So I require them to use the garage, which some of them are like, I'm not real fond of that idea. But you need two onsite property, cause off-street does not count. So you have to ultimately use your garage and then driveway, so it's tandem.
Yeah, I think we gotta look at it, a big picture too. I mean, cause we do all this stuff and all these events and things to promote Carlton and promote tourism. And then on one hand, we can't say, but you can't stay here, you know what I mean? Um, so I, I, that would, that gives me a little bit of hesitation. We can't have, we can't have.
Can't have our cake and eat it.
Exactly. So we have to be fair and equitable in the process and look at it. As part of what we're trying to strive for and what, you know, our town, our, our, our restaurants, our business owners are, are leaning on as well.
I mean, I think in our policy should strive for just balance, you know, uh, like you don't wanna dissuade. Like you're saying, we're promoting tourism, so you don't wanna dissuade that, but at the same time, you wanna have balance and uh. So that should be our objective, I think. Also, I mean. Do you feel our fees are kind of low? I mean, if you wanna do this, I mean, I think we should. Have the fees as high as what's reasonable. That can offset. The, you know, time and co- uh, you know, the, the cost to the city to manage the program.
That is something, if the council wishes for us to look into and bring back what that we are seeing from other comparable cities, we can do that.
As I say, hey, if somebody wants to run out their place and, you know, and all of a sudden it's two hundred dollars, you're like, hey, you wanna run it out? It's, it is what it is, as long as it's with, with it fair.
Right, I mean, you, I could, I could argue that, um, so why am I being treated different than another business in town as well? You know, they will, they pay a business license fee. This is.
Is it, is it considered a business license fee or is it some?
Right now, they pay an annual business license fee. There's the initial application fee and then the only ongoing expense to the city is that they have to have a business license.
So with that, is the restaurant and the, there, there are the rentals, all the same business, the fees are flat across the board?
Correct.
We can, could it be categorized as something somewhat different than just the standard business license?
Yes.
So that we don't fall into that category.
That is something that we can do.
I would like, I mean, from my perspective.
Yeah, I'd be interested to know what other cities do with that, if there, if there is a difference or.
Yeah. Well, we're coming up on ten minutes left here. Oh, that's right. I forgot.
So all of this vacation rental business is taking away from Carlton having rental homes.
Long-term rentals.
Yeah, so that a family moving here to rent, cause they can't afford to buy. Doesn't find much available, cause things are turned into vacation rentals.
Possibly. I mean, I would argue that the costs are outrageous too. I mean, there's some in my neighborhood that you can't have vacation rentals in because of the HOA. Um, and the rentals sit on the market for a long period of time, cause they're charging close to three thousand dollars for.
Yeah.
A family home. So, I mean, I don't know if I see it as just the vacation rentals or the problem that's.
Yeah.
Causing lack of.
The blind man and, you know, the um, attraction of Carlton. The community that it is and uh. But I, I, I understand that, I just don't know how we solve that issue.
Well, we, I mean, a different topic, but we. Well, we, I mean, different topic, but we, we try to solve one issue and we create another one, you know? I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna say it again, uh, affordable housing, we do these things to create affordable housing, now they're turned into vacation rentals.
Yeah, that's part of the balance.
Yeah, so.
We're not doing that balance.
Well, we're building the whole, thus proposed, what are we calling those?
Narrow. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, well, but it's, it's.
Expensive and then they go to for vacation.
If the, if the builder, you know, thinks they can get four hundred grand for that and somebody's willing to pay it, it's what somebody's, that's what's happening, you know? It's not a control, it's not controlled.
Sometimes it's a, yeah, it's a, and, you know, full disclosure here, I do take care of the vacation rental behind us, so as I'm saying these things, I'm seeing some of this stuff. Yes, it is. If we ever came to, if we came to a vote on something, I wouldn't have noticed, I was thinking about that. But, you know, the houses that are on Main Street there, those three houses, I I know what those houses looked like before they were
Oh, yeah.
put together for vacation rental, I know the one behind us was done deliberately specifically with that in mind.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it would have been falling to the ground, so that's the other problem we run into there is that if it's a home that's a little bit rundown or a little bit iffy, that's where you're running into problems sometimes too, because people will come in and look and they can get it at a decent, you know, at a lower price and then they'll use it for an investment. Um, on the other hand, you know, developers do that too. You know?
Well, and we really are a destination town, I mean,
Yeah.
we may not have the beach, but we've got wine country and as it grows, we're, we're a hotspot for that and weekend rentals.
And I think that's probably why you're seeing so many more application, I don't think that, you know, I think it's only gonna grow here, is what I see. Yeah, well, that's what I see.
And other cities are implementing moratoriums. And where the, the place where they can get in.
And so that's where I, I tend to agree with you, um, councillor of like, a, a, a cap could have an adverse effect. Um, you know, limiting that, and maybe, I don't know what it looks like, how do we draw on a map like a, a limitation of certain east, west, north, south, I don't, you know what I mean, what that looks like? Maybe seems like a, a more.
Maybe it's more space, I'm not, I keep going this, but you know, distance between homes.
I mean, because we're not, the downtown core, you're not gonna limit, you know, that's, that's there. You know, where our growth is happening to the, to the south.
Right now, yeah.
Southeast right now.
Yeah.
So, uh, with you saying other towns are putting that moratorium, can we get, say, a list of what some of those are and some information from those towns, if they're experiencing some of the problems that we're talking about?
The moratoriums are temporary, they have to be temporary.
Oh.
Um, in order to extend it after the initial six months, the city has to be able, or the, whatever governmental entity, it can be counties as well, um, have to show that they are making progress towards addressing the concerns that led to implementing the moratorium in the first place, so it's essentially a pause to fix the rules.
It's not a, like a moratorium, like just cap, like no more rental, vacation rentals ever, yeah, okay.
Temporary pause.
I put, I think that one thing that would be some sort of maybe a helpful fix would be to look at that parking, the parking rules, like that might be something that's real, you know, one per bedroom, period, whatever, I'm just pulling that number out, like not have a, one per bedroom or two, like. I mean, maybe that, I mean, that would, that would solve.
Either or.
You know, not either or, no, not have an option, they only have two.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it's either.
So four-bedroom house, they have four, four parking space, yeah.
Is the city receiving a lot of complaints on parking issues related to vacation rentals?
Um, not currently, the one property that was in JR Meadows that Linda was, there was referencing, um, that one actually had to go through conditional use process because of the neighbors' concerns and parking was one of them. Um, it got to the point that the condition was added to the property that the driveway had to be used before any street parking could be taken, so they had three bedrooms, they had three parking spots on this, in the driveway, they had plenty of on, on-property parking. But they had additional people at times, and so they would park in the streets, got to the point where the neighbors were taking pictures and sending it to staff. And we would have to let them know that the driveway is full, so they're allowed to park in the street, it's, it's a public street. Um, it's, we can't tow a car or cite somebody for parking in the street legally. Um, so it, it, it added conditions and it was, it was difficult to enforce, it was, it was difficult because you were a buffer between the neighborhood and the owner, so.
I know on the three houses on Main Street, well, the one has parking in the back anyway, they can put, they can put two cars in the back easily. But the other two up there, it's kind of interesting because there's a driveway and there's a nice long driveway for both of the houses, except the driveway extends out onto the sidewalk and when you have three cars there, they all park in the driveway, which means they're all parking and blocking the sidewalk. So it can be difficult. And we've, yeah, we've gone through some conversations about that, so I, I, if you have that kind of a situation where you've got the driveway there, but you've got the sidewalk and people just kind of make themselves at home.
But in that case, that's a violation, food violation.
Yeah, and they.
Let me get councillor X in the badge.
I mean, I know it's.
He's getting real good at this.
It's tricky to try to figure out what it's what and where to do with it, I mean, that's the whole thing, trying to.
Well, and you hate to, you know, if these people are on vacation, you hate to just, you know,
Yeah.
make their lives uncomfortable because they're on vacation, on the one hand, on the other hand, the homeowners need to make, the property owners need to make that clear.
Yeah.
That's when your local representative comes in handy, you're responsible for that, yeah.
I have a question on that, just because she brought it up. Um, I think I read in the ordinance that the contact information for that local representative has to be posted in the home.
Yeah, I read that too. And I've worked in some of these, so I haven't seen.
Required to be posted in the house, and I, I do not go to each vacation rental and check.
Yeah.
There are some of them that I've asked, send me a picture, once you have it posted. And they'll just email it to me and some are really great about it and.
We could just have you do inspections every year.
Ancient Amy's.
Inspections. The city of your hots did do inspections. Um, but there was, initially, they asked for a lot of information like showing windows for egress in an emergency and situation, fire extinguishers, and we ran into a, a challenge because we were not building officials.
Yeah, you were doing building inspections, you were not, yeah.
But one of the things that was on the checklist was checking for the local contact information, along with the city of your hots required a parking map, so where on the property you were to park your cars.
Seems a little excessive, but maybe not.
But, and this is, it's, it may seem that way. This was a community that was struggling with a lot of other issues of balancing a lot of service industry employees trying to live there, um, but not being able to qual- qualify for rentals. Um, many multifamilies or, um, we had business owners that would buy properties just to house their employees in. Um, and we were also dealing with a very different situation. Uh, yeah, hots annually brought in over a million dollars in transient lodging tax. And that brought in a substantial amount into their general fund, um, as well as part of the restricted, restricted state funds. So it was, it was a very different situation at that point in time. That's why they were more rigid and demanding.
How have these been like, um, relatively smooth processes through the planning commission? Um, or have there just not been a lot of written complaints or submittals or?
Um, the ones that gets the first step of it is the vacation rental process and they, they work with me, and there is some, there always is some owners that are a little bit trickier to work with than others. Um, but when they get to the conditional use permit where they have to go to the planning commission, it's usually, it's pretty contentious. The neighbors don't want it, um, there hasn't been one where it hasn't been some type of heated exchange. So it, it, what, but like, like I said, the, it has to be approved essentially. Oh, just whatever those conditions are that are added to it, but, um, it sometimes can get hairy to get to that decision to those, at those conditions.
I would uh, uh, assume that you have to kind of um, add some layer of like, um, reasoning, you know, conditional use, like who's the authoritative body on that, the planning commission to say like, I say I want a twenty-foot tree to block that window looking in my backyard, I mean.
Well, right, and, and some of the concerns are always, are what if, what if they do this, what if the renters do this, what if do that? So you kind of have to, the commission has to make their best judgment as to what would be a reasonable and fair.
So the commission does that currently for the conditional.
Was taking a break, was it?
What, um, so part of those cities that we, we were asked to maybe look into, um, one that comes to mind that seemed pretty controversial was like Lincoln City, didn't they? They probably did a moratorium, I, maybe that sounds familiar, or, but they did something fairly recently.
It's actually Lincoln County.
Lincoln County.
Well, Lincoln City has also had their own, um, challenges and they had actually, I believe, if I remember correctly, they did some based upon zoning in areas, so they tried to limit how many were in different sections of town. Um, so that is certainly something to look at, but Lincoln County itself had some significant legal challenges.
It might still be.
I think it is.
Property rights.
Yeah, those are things that don't get resolved quickly.
Well, just look. Go ahead.
Oh, I, well, I believe with Lincoln County, there was, um, sort of dueling ordinances between what the county, the county commissioners passed something, but then there was a can't remember the order, there's a ballot initiative that was not the same as that, I think it went up to the court appeals, then came back down, probably going back up. But this is a hot topic on the beach, especially on the beach. Well, and you know, McMinnville is involved in some litigation currently. Vacation rental. How many bedrooms and parking spots? That's why I think it's funny that those are the two things we keep talking about.
Just throw another.
I know, I've heard it from people in town that they feel that with the vacation, you know, it's keeping some of the people from renting here, living here.
Yeah.
Employees of businesses and uh, sons and daughters of people that have lived here for years.
But there's other reasons, as Kevin pointed out.
Well, the vacation rentals are taking up long-term rentals.
Some of the more affordable housing.
Right, yeah.
But long-term rentals are beginning, are, the prices are really high, as Kevin just pointed out.
Oh, I, I hear you, I mean, you look at some of the long-term rental prices, it's more than what you know, is the mortgage plus quite a bit.
Yeah, I don't, I just feel like blaming the housing crisis on vacation rentals isn't a fair assessment. I think it's a.
I'm not blaming it a hundred percent, I'm not bad.
Yeah.
It's just that it was brought up about people in town. You know, do we have a problem with it? Well, some people, guys, we do have a problem with it.
Yeah, it's a, when, when you get started talking about finding affordable housing, that's probably one of the first things people reach for is, well, there are, everything's being bought up as a vacation rental and we don't have any affordable housing, which is not necessarily the situation, but I don't know if it's part of it or not, I, I can say, you know, like I said, the three houses on Main Street, I don't know that those would have ever been livable had they not been taken and turned into vacation rentals. You know, they certainly weren't. So, what is that? On the other hand, between Shirley and me, our block has got three, four, five vacation rentals, just between, from her house to mine. I think it's five. And it's a very short block, Tyler.
When we're talking about, but there's any concerns about clumping, though, one thing to keep in mind is would you rather be the house that's surrounded by vacation rentals on all sides? Let's assume that we have to, you know, they can't be immediately adjacent. So surely your, your backyard neighbor, your side neighbor, your other side neighbor are all vacation rentals. It would probably be better for all four of those to be vacation rentals and you not to be stuck in the middle. If they're being loud, probably pretty nice on the weekdays.
It's almost like it is for me now.
Most of the, I, I don't know, that's a, another question is how many complaints do we, do we get about noise and parties and whatever on the vacation rentals?
That would be a question for the police department, because ultimately, if there is a noise complaint, they're gonna
They're gonna hear it.
They're gonna get it.
I was just wondering if, if you have heard any comments or if any remarks have been made to that effect.
We haven't had to any revoke any licenses due to any type of non-compliance issues, there was um, a few years back, there was one that property that was negligent in paying their transient tax. Um, and when I sent the letter saying your, my permit is gonna go before planning commission for vacation, that, they're like, oh, here's my money, so that's as close as we've ever had to.
So you said in McMinnville, there's, can you give some examples of some litigation that's going on right now?
Right before their moratorium went into effect, there was a woman, I think she's from Texas, had owned a property in town, submitted her rental, her application to be a short-term rental. And one of the big blow-up issues that ended up blowing everything up, um, was how many bedrooms the rental was and whether they had enough parking spots, they had, I think it was four parking spots, there were four legal bedrooms, but there was a uh, kind of office bonus room that in some advertisements was listed, so there were some ads that showed it as a five-bedroom. The applicant claimed that they were only going to rent it as a four-bedroom. How do you?
How do you guarantee that?
Yeah, right.
The same goes for a pull-out couch.
Right, I'm just gonna say that.
The living rooms and dwelling.
Best bedroom has a pull-out couch.
And then there was also an issue about prior non-compliance with, um, acting as a short-term rental without a license, which would have prohibited the granting of the, of the license. So I don't, I don't think Carlton has anything like that. And then the record was just really muddy. Because people have strong feelings about this stuff.
I'm just concerned if we try to, I mean, I don't wanna, uh, get into a situation where we're trying to find a fix for, well, there's no problem, but at the same time, you know, I am concerned about the, you know, the new development. I am concerned about the, you know, the new development coming in and potentially, you know, the potentials of what could happen, so I think we need to consider that.
Yeah.
It's good to stay ahead of the issue instead of being behind.
So, I mean, with that in mind, um, you know, I think we probably should think about, you know, implementing some kind of um guidelines, parameters.
And as we're also looking at the development code, like Counselor Skipper was saying, figuring out how our rules are gonna play with the attempts to increase affordable housing opportunities and making sure that those don't contradict each other.
Right now, the Carlton Crest, of course, has an HOA that limits a lot of these putting out signs and business activities, but the J R Meadows stuff doesn't have HOAs or any rules or anything like that.
They have some, it's very, off the, off the top of my head, I don't remember what they call it, but it's very, it's very minimal. They don't have an HOA that they can use to, they don't have to get paint color choices and they don't have that kind of stuff. Um, they have minimum standard basic, you know, you have to park your car. You can't have your car parked, you know, for three, for three years, I think, but our code would also.
Right, city code would cover that.
Would cover that as well, but yeah, there is, Carlton Crest is the only one with um inactive HOA that is absolutely, that enforces their HOA regulations.
I'm very much in favor of looking at what our options are in terms of fees, because no matter what, I don't think, you know, the city should be, you know, or we should be using our taxpayer dollars to, you know, to, to uh
Administer.
To administer this program, so I think the fees should be compatible with the effort that goes into managing that.
So that's far, what I've captured the council would like more information on is the fee structure for licenses and applications. Uh, looking at the parking rules and the inconsistencies that Amy has brought to our attention. And I wanted to ask, cause I have different ways of looking at zoning or trying to spread out uh vacation rentals. Um, I wasn't sure if that was an entire council desire to look at, we can further and see some examples.
Avoiding clumping?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, um, with that, when we look at that, I will say inevitably you're going to have some clumping, so you'll wanna look at that as far as the balance. Uh, likely on Main Street, you're gonna have a lot of clumping. And then you're just for what, what's happening now, just naturally. You're gonna have some of that, so if you restrict that too much, you may have more empty houses. So it's again, just a pro and a con, but we can certainly look into that and what other cities have done.
Yeah, and the other thing I, I would ask if it's okay is just what other cities do in far as like their notification process? We talked about the hundred foot, is that just, we know that that's the minimum, are most cities doing the minimum, or are they going further out in the neighborhood?
What can do, cities have, want to have residential zones that don't have vacation rentals in them, or is that just unheard of in America?
I don't know uh nationwide, but uh right here on the front application, it says what zones that we allow vacation rental in. And I will note that the downtown zone specifically, um, the vacation rental is only allowed in the upper. So, for example, we have the retail space down below, but it still allows for a living unit upstairs, vacation rental upstairs. There is a couple modify, there is a couple um that are single-family homes in the downtown zone, but they were single-family homes before the zone change um that took place, and so the planning commission uh ruled that they are similar use, because it was already being used as a single-family home before the zoning changed with that um designation of upper story. So there is, I think, two single-family homes in the downtown core that are actually.
Grandfather Dan.
Their grandfather, and everything else is pretty much.
Well, what do you wanna do, folks?
So I have four items for additional research. These uh notification process, parking rules, and looking at what other cities do regarding zoning.
Anything, Dad?
I think that's a good action plan.
Can I just add something? Um, the only thing I would add is to perhaps have a percentage.
Yeah, he's been pretty quiet. Oh, wait a minute, is he awake?
Can you hear me?
I see his little speaker bouncing.
He left the room.
Wow, his speaker was bouncing there.
Very passionate about it.
Need to watch and make sure he hasn't been really saying much.
Yeah, he's.
Again, yes.
Yeah, he's off.
I was expecting more of this to come during this conversation, kind of disappointing.
You're disappointed.
Well, I thought for sure there was some major problem. Well, that's the issue.
Can anyone hear me? Can you hear me?
Hear me, it's technical difficulties in this. Be there shortly.
All right, can you guys hear me or not?
This might be a good opportunity to let you know, you will probably be happy about a meeting we're having tomorrow regarding AV in the new civic building.
Might be a good thing to look at.
A lot of different people.
Okay.
Electricians, AV people.
Architects.
It's all gonna come together.
There is something to be said for the days without technology.
But no one can speak, listen to call.
Apparently, that's what she's struggling with there, yeah. Like me and my phone.
Mobile device not found.
Something's connected, something's connected. Was it, was it colored?
Father in McMinnville, what areas are popular for the vacation rentals, near the downtown core?
That is um walk, walking distance to Third Street. That's really where you wanted to have vacation rentals.
The old central district, yeah.
Can you hear me now?
They're gonna be the more popular areas, just because people are usually coming into these towns to see to get a feel for the old part of the town.
And you wanna walk to restaurants and.
And that's where.
To do.
Yeah, that's where you're made.
Subdivision, usually.
Well, you're, you live in a subdivision. Yeah. And you live in a subdivision at home, you wanna go to a vacation, yeah.
Connection to the tourism, you live in a subdivision in a V B O.
Yeah, then you're just right back where you were.
Yeah. Yeah. People are crazy.
Which I, yeah, I hadn't realized that people were using the new houses for VRPOs, and when I realized that, I went.
Well, and.
Why?
Actually.
If you, yeah.
And I've worked on a couple in town that one of them, the guy, him and his wife, they live in Beaverton. So they bought a house in Carlton.
Yeah.
Just so they can come over here. Obviously, get up and go home to Beaver. In the meantime, get their friends coming to stay in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're good now. It tested appropriately, so.
Yes, Germaine. So is Germaine, did Germaine?
Can you hear me?
There you are. Go for it.
That's why I was quiet, I guess, I couldn't say anything. Uh, I was just gonna add, um, I don't know if we should have a cap right now or not, we're not deciding on that, but I think it would be good to um, perhaps have like a number of houses we have in town and have a percentage that we can always compare and maybe try to stay at that percentage, and that could be sort of like a soft cap before we decide on a cap, if, if that makes sense. That's the only thing I would add. I, I mostly agree with everything that was said.
I mean, that's, would be a good way to do it, keep track of it, follow a little bit.
Or it's just five percent, so.
And review this in like a year.
It looks like you want more information before you make a final determinations.
And include that in, that idea into it.
Into the more information.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? Any thoughts, comments? Um, okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
That's good.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Hey, it's, it's seven thirty. What, oh. As soon as our guest turns off his computer. No pressure there, Mark. Well. Okay, okay, we got it. Okay, so it's seven thirty and we are starting this session of uh Tuesday, March fourteenth, um, city council regular session. You call the roll, please.
Thompson-Rizer.
Present.
Counselor Hill, not present. Counselor Erickson.
Here.
Counselor Brendon.
Here.
Counselor Skipper.
Here.
Council President Ward Mullin.
Here.
Mayor Watkins.
Here. Okay. Welcome, please join with me in doing a bunch of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Okay, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Assistant Mayor, uh, I believe there's one addition under ceremony appointments and announcements after the Juliet's House ceremony to add uh volunteerism announcements and opportunities.
Okay, that's what, how we're doing it, all right, okay. Ceremonies, appointments, and announcements, um, so we are doing budget committee?
Yes, uh, Mayor and Council, uh, we have two budget committee applications in front of you, and we have free vacancies. Uh, we are still posting and advertising for the third vacancy. Uh, but we do have uh two applications in front of you that the citizens committee is required by the state of Oregon.
Okay. And I think we do a motion? Yes.
I moved, uh, we, that council appoint both Brian Ray and Robin Guck to the budget committee for a three-year term.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion varies. Thank you, guys. Um, okay, Juliet's House proclamation ceremony.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the Juliet's House has brought uh their annual proclamation to us. They are also asking for some additional support from the city, and I believe there is a representative Colonel Jowa here tonight to be able to speak to uh, the Juliet's House proclamation and what they're asking for.
So I'm gonna jump in, my name is Katie Bowman, I am here from Juliet's House with Carol Jowa. Uh, we are both here um just to speak a little bit to the proclamation and, yes, what we're um, hoping that Carlton can join us in doing for um April, which is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Um, so we wanted to give you a few quick statistics just for context. Um, so twenty twenty-one is our most recent year that we have data for. Um, and in that year, Yamhill County had a hundred and fifteen founded reports of child abuse, meaning that they made it through the screening process and they were able to determine that some harm was done. Um, the most common types of abuse for all children across Oregon, as well as Yamhill County, are threat of harm and neglect, things that are easy to slip under the radar of caring adults. So, um, National Child Abuse Prevention Month in April is kind of an opportunity to alert people that this is something that happens in our communities and there are things that we can do to prevent it and change it. Well, um, we are asking you to um adopt the proclamation. And also, we would like to offer that if your city staff, um, city council members are interested or anyone in your community, we do offer a two-hour um training for adults called stewards of children. Um, that is available to you, it teaches you how to recognize. That is available to you, it teaches you how to recognize and respond to and report child abuse. It focuses on child sexual abuse because that is the most under-reported type, but it has information that's helpful for all types of abuse. And all city leaders are actually mandatory reporters, so we also have a mandatory reporting training that is available. Um, so that is kind of a little bit of context for what we can do to help partner with you to prevent child abuse and why we're here to talk to you now about what we're doing in April. And Carol is going to talk about some things that you could partner with us on.
Hello, I am happy to be with you tonight. I'm Carol Jowa and I'm the stewards of children program coordinator for Juliet's House, that the adult prevention training. And after I had sent you a list of things that we would love to see you do, my husband and I sat down and talked to great length about it and we decided we would try and do a lot of this for you. I know that you're working in closed quarters and things are difficult during this time, so, but what we would like to do is put ribbons on the trees on Main Street. We would like to have posters around town. I doubt that we will have time to go into every business and ask them to post a poster or put pinwheels or blue ribbons in their windows. If, if someone from the city could help us with that, that would be absolutely marvelous. We'll provide yard signs, bows, pinwheels, blue ribbons. Heidi Larson will be doing Carlton Corners and we hope to have a lighted pinwheel garden there. I need to know if there is a place in Land Park where we typically put our pinwheel garden. If there's a place that we can plug lights, blue lights in, we'd like to have a lighted pinwheel garden.
Is that? Possible?
I know we usually put the pinwheels by the main tree there, I don't know that there's an electric there. I don't think there's power, I think the closest power would be over there next to the whiskey tasting room.
Bull Run.
Bull Run and then back by the basketball courts. So there could be something maybe in the Rose Garden area because of the power as opposed to that area.
That would be a nice area to put it. Be closer to the front, to the sidewalk where people could see it.
And we would put the pinwheels there also.
Yeah.
And where was that again?
Would be on the east end of the park, right next to the Bull Run Tasty, right in the Rose Garden.
Okay. Okay, and I can follow up. Following the meeting to make sure that I've got correct location.
Yeah, it would be the northeast corner of the park.
Okay. Northeast corner. I also would encourage you folks to put an article in your city newsletter, if you have one, emailings that you send out. Put a posting on your city website and the Carlton Police Department website. We are going to be highlighting all of the cities who have adopted this proclamation on our social media and tell them, letting people know that, that the city leaders in this community are highly supporting this awareness campaign. So we will be doing that. April 21st is everyone wear blue day and we need your help on that. If you could get that word around Carlton and why are we wearing blue? Many people might not get it, but why are we wearing blue? So do any of you have any questions at this point?
Carol, this is Shirley here.
Hi Shirley.
Hi Carol. I, I have one sign and I have a few pinwheels. My home is on Grant Street where there's a lot of traffic that goes back and forth to the Lower Park. And I'd be happy to, to get to receive a few more pinwheels from you. And if you had any extra blue lights, I have a tree that I can put, not a big tree, but a smaller tree that I could put the blue lights on. If that, if that's something that you would desire to have.
Absolutely. Now, I will tell you that we have all new signs this year.
Oh, well then I need.
Our new logo, so I will make sure that you get new signs.
Yeah, if I could have a couple of signs and then, you know, enough pinwheels to, you know, sort of have a display and then any, the blue lights, if you have them, we'll put them up.
Okay. I'm writing this down so I don't forget it.
Right.
Yeah. Pinwheels and blue lights, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Carol.
Any other questions? Or ideas that you might have?
You guys usually do a great job of ensuring that you're very visible in the, in the community. I can't think of any way that we could add on much more to what you do.
Okay.
But heaven does.
I don't, I was just gonna ask, I was gonna clarify, so the blue lights, I understand the ribbons on the trees, are the blue lights the existing lights that we can change the color? Or are there no longer any working, existing lights on trees downtown, like in the canopies?
The lights that she's referring to is something that Juliet's House would provide.
Okay. Thank you.
So Ken and I will put up all of the decorations probably the 30th of March, either then or April 1st, and then we will take them down at the end of April. April 28th is our celebrate, our main annual fundraiser. So we're, we're going to be kind of tight that weekend, but we'd like to take all of that down then. And we are asking that we are going to try and use these pinwheels again next year. So, and the cost has gone up substantially, so we know that pinwheels walk away, that's just a fact. But if people ask if they can have one, if they would like to get a sign or something to put with it, they can let Juliet's House know. So.
So. Go ahead.
If you want to know if there's any other questions.
Are there any other questions, comments?
No.
Okay, I think we're good on that. Are we reading the proclamation now? We read.
Ready to make a motion?
Well. What do we do? We don't need a motion, yeah. So when you're ready, we can read the proclamation, Carol.
How long do you need it?
No, I'll read it, but I just wanted to.
Now, now's fine.
Okay, you didn't have anything else that you wanted to add in there or?
No, I could talk for an hour.
We don't have that much. Thank you. Okay, proclamation, Support of Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2023. Whereas child abuse is one of our nation's most serious public health problems with scientific studies documenting the link between the abuse of children and a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral disorders. And whereas it is estimated that one in four children will suffer significant abuse before the age of 18, and in F F Y 2021, over 160,000 contacts were made to the Oregon Child Abuse Hotline, a total of 4,000, 42,876 received reports were assigned for CPS assessment. Of all completed CPS assessments, 7,352 were founded for abuse and involved 10,766 victims. And whereas the physical, emotional, mental, and fiscal impact of abuse falls on children of all ages and abilities who come from all economic, racial, and social backgrounds. And these crimes affect many more family members, friends, neighbors, and community. And whereas effective child abuse prevention efforts succeed because of partnerships created among state and local federal and local government agencies, schools, faith communities, civic and community organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community while recognizing that feeling connected to community can be a protective factor against child abuse. And whereas Carlton is dedicated to stopping child abuse and supporting survivors and their non-offending families while working to prevent it. Whereas each of us has a role to play in stopping the problem of child abuse as part of, part of, part of the solution by learning how to prevent, recognize, and report child abuse and supporting prevention, education, and empowerment programs for children and youth. Now therefore, we, the city of Carlton, City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2023 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month. We reaffirm Carlton, Oregon's commitment in creating a safer, healthier, more thriving community for our children and taking steps to help prevent child abuse through awareness, efforts, prevention promotion, and training on responding responsibly. We encourage all citizens to wear blue each Friday in April and as a public statement in Carlton and in support of child abuse prevention. We encourage community members to join in awareness rallies on April 22nd throughout Yamhill County. Further, we call upon all citizens to invest in the lives of children by learning what they can do to help stop child abuse through Juliet's House, a community resource by visiting www.julietshouse.org. Introduced and adopted on March 14th, 2023. All in favor? Aye. Okay.
I just have a clear point before we move on.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, I don't like to make assumptions, so I just want to check in with council. I heard a request to put ribbons on trees downtown to help with, get business posters into the business. I am willing to, if council approves. Core. Juliet's House and the Association to help connect this. For yard signs and bottles to be put in the, in the garden and to provide an article with material provided by Juliet's House in the city newsletter throughout the month of April. I heard tentative approval, I just want to make sure that that is approved by council.
Yes.
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 Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carol.
Thank you so very much. And you can just email me that proclamation, if you would like that.
After it's been signed, yeah.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you for all that you do.